Commissioners meeting for Monday, September 23rd, 2024. If everyone could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I want to give notice that we did have an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss some legal issues. And we are going to start out the meeting with a presentation about recycling. Mr. Foster, do you want to lead us in on this one?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Tonight, you're going to hear from Mr. Charles Noble, who is the Operations Manager at Republic Services. And he is accompanied by the General Manager, Andy Holt, and she covers seven recycling facilities in the Northeast. So just to give you a little background information of why this presentation is happening. Over in Public Works, whether it's phone calls or emails, we've had residents reaching out asking if Radnor Township truly recycles. So of course, we say yes. That happens twice a week on Thursdays and Fridays throughout the whole township. But for some reason, there does seem to be a feeling that it's not happening. Maybe it's not being done correctly. So we have invited Republic Services to be able to come here to basically vouch on the township's behalf on how good of a recycling community we are, but also maybe some things that we could do better. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Noble and also Mrs. Holt, and they'll be able to have the presentation. And if there's any questions that you have for them, they will be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Mr. Noble, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Charles Noble. I've been with Republic Services for almost 34 years. The last 24 years, I've been in the recycling side of the business. I've been at the King of Prussia location for four and a half years as a recycling operations manager. The plant where we, where materials are recycled is also known as, what we call it, a MRF. So if you hear that name in the, in the world of recycling, it actually stands for Material Recovery Facility. But I just, I'll probably slip up and say MRF throughout this presentation, so I wanted to get that. I get asked many questions about recycling, and the two most asked are, is it actually being recycled and what to recycle? Does it, does the material get recycled? Yes. Short answer is yes. Our goal is to process all material that comes into our facility. No system, though, no matter what people say, does not capture 100% of the material. You know, the system was designed to do 93% to 95% of the actual material coming through the system, and then anywhere from 10% to 15% of that is actually residue that gets thrown in there. So around 80% of the inbound material that comes in can't be processed and sent out to outlets to be recycled. One final thought on this, and which I've seen a lot of articles and papers, is people put air tags or, you know, tags in their recycling and go, oh, look, it went to the landfill. It didn't go to recycling. Well, you got to understand the way our places work. Anything less than two inches is 99% of the time is going to go to residue. So the little air tags that people put in there and the trackers, it's, it's going to go because our system's not designed to do that. With that being said, this is, like I said, end of the landfill. This is why when we ask you, well, I'll say this later in the program, but like caps on bottles, leave the caps on. Because if the cap's off, there's two reasons for that. If the cap's off, it'll end up in the residue. But if it's caps on, it'll keep the bottle whole. And we don't, our systems separate material in 2D and 3D. So a bottle, containers are, are 3D, so that's designed to do certain things. And paper and cardboard is 2D, and it's designed to go in different way on the machine. So now, as far as what to recycle, it's a little harder to answer because everything nowadays has a recycling symbol on it. And unfortunately, you know, it's not always the case. I'll take one example is on boxes of diapers, it says recycling. But you can't even imagine how many diapers we get through the system every day from people. If I had a nickel for every diaper that came through the line, I'd be retired right now on a beach. I wouldn't be standing right here talking to you. It's, it's very, what I call, I guess, wishful recycling. They just wish everything could be recycled, and unfortunately, that's not the truth. And you also got to figure into this, the human side of it. We have a lot of, we have like 25 sorters on our lines that people actually pick through this material. So these, on the human side of it, you got people actually picking diapers out of the line, needles and bags and all that stuff. So it's, and we see everything from the kitchen sink to brake parts, everything. And especially when Christmas is coming up, we're going to see a whole bunch of lights, Christmas lights coming through the system, which causes us a problem. Now, as far as what can be recycled, you know, we'll start with cardboard and mixed paper. The only cardboard that's really not recyclable is one that's wax coated or if it has food stains on it. Example, pizza boxes. You know, if the pizza's in there and it only stained the bottom half of it, tear the top off, put the top in recycling, and throw the other one away. Or if it's all stained, just throw it all away. It messes up the process at the mills, and they can't, it can't be recycled. Plastics, we go with the empty, clean, and dry. It doesn't have to be spotless. Just make sure it's empty, rinse it out one time, throw it out, and then, I mean, kind of air dry, and then put it in your recycling. Some examples of plastics that we would do is like water bottles, soda bottles, milk jugs, laundry detergent bottles. Plastic foods. I'd like to mention earlier, like I mentioned earlier, keep the caps on the bottles. It helps everything all the way around. Metals, aluminum cans, tin, tin food cans, or other metals. Car parts is not part of the program. Please, it's not part of it. It'll jam our system and break and cost thousands of dollars in damage. As far as what, what we do with the material, when we sell it off to the other, to the buyers, corrugated cardboard is made into cereal boxes, paper towels, cardboard boxes, and et cetera. Mixed paper is made into toilet paper, A cartons, insulation and cat litter. PET, which is their Coke bottle, two-liter bottles, are turned into new bottles, carpet and clothing. Tin cans are turned into, when they melt it down into solder, and they use it in lead acid batteries, products, household appliances, and new cans. And then, as far as the colored plastics, the Todd bottles, the laundry detergent have a color to it, it can't be recycled. It has to be on its own. So that's made into like park benches and toys and stuff like that. As far, you know, recycling at one time was so easy when it was dual stream, and there wasn't a lot of, too many plastic choices. But nowadays, it seems like every year, they're coming up with some new fancy plastic to be recycled, and they stick that recycle label on there. And then, and then the truth of the matter is, it's really not, the market hasn't caught up to the plastics. So it takes a while to, that's tough to start. So I'd like to end with, one of the saying we have here is, when in doubt, throw it out. If you're not 100% sure, throw it away. And then, you know, Republic creates a circular economy and challenge, is challenging but achievable with investment and commitment. Republic Services has the infrastructure and focus on sustainability to affect real change. And when I'm, you know, part of that is when a new product comes out, like take Instant Number Fives, butter containers, yogurt containers. Three years ago, there was no market for it. It was a plastic that was available, but nobody wanted to buy it. Two and a half years ago, all of a sudden, everybody wanted it. So Republic spent $500,000, put the machines in, they collected. So it's, like I said, it's an ever-evolving market. So, but yes, that's all I got, I guess. Any questions or anything?
Yeah, anybody have any questions? I have one quick one. You mentioned plastics and all the different colors. So are you taking any number plastic or just the one, two, and five?
Yeah, we're taking one through sevens right now.
What?
We take one through sevens, yes.
One through sevens? Yeah, good. A lot of places are just doing one, two, and five. And a lot of places, and I don't know if you have any insight to this because you're still taking glass, but I know a lot of places are, have stopped.
Yeah, we're taking glass. We, we process it. And, and that's another thing. Next year, we planning on spending another $400,000 to put a new system in and do it even, to get it even cleaner and to where we can do even more with it, as far as options to do with it.
The other thing we always hear, tell me if this is a rumor, is that, you know, the plastic bags, shopping bags that we have now banned in Radnor Township.
That's a no-no.
That's a no-no. Right. And that really does mess with the machines? That's what everybody always says.
Yeah, the machines. And also, on the human side of it, if it's a dark bag and we can't see what's in it, and they go to open it.
Okay.
Like I said, you can't imagine what's, what you see and stuff. So yeah, it's no bags.
Thanks.
Do you have any data about how, like the amount of the poundage or the volume of recycling that your facilities do in, you know, in a week or a month? Like what are your current?
Well, we average anywhere from 8,000 to 9,000 tons a month at our facility. I don't have specifics on your site, but I mean, at your township, but I can get that if you needed it.
And how big of a area would that, do you serve? That's that 8,000 to 9,000 a month?
We serve King of Prussia, you might be on there.
So Chester, Chester, Montgomery County?
Can you come up to the mic? We've got, this is being televised.
Hi. Chester County, Montgomery County, we do Lancaster County, we've done some stuff with them as well. Berks, a little bit. But those are the basic, right around our neck of the woods.
Yep.
And Montgomery Consortium.
Montgomery County Consortium.
Montgomery County, yeah.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's incredibly helpful.
And I'm just going to reiterate the human factor. Please, think before you throw it out. There are human beings that touch all this material, and, and it's, it's frightening sometimes what goes up the line. So really think before you throw. But thank you.
Or throw it in the bin, the trash bin, not the recycling bin.
When in doubt, throw it out. When in doubt, throw it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's very helpful. Mr. Foster, any last comments?
Thank you, Mr. Noble and Ms. Holt. The one thing I do want to say is, they came with a bunch of material. So we're going to go through material, I'm going to get that from them, and we're going to find a spot to post it on the website when it talks about recycling, just a lot of other tidbits and reminders for the residents to be able to have knowledge for.
Perfect. So this is just the tip of the education that will be coming out from us.
And they'll also be doing the same presentation for the EAC.
Perfect.
We have a great website also, Recycling Simplified. If you ever have a question, you can go on, a lot of answers.
I'm just going to repeat what you said because you weren't at the mic. There's a website called Recycling Simplified. And please go on that, learn much more about the process and then what you can and cannot recycle in our township. Thank you.
We really appreciate you coming by, and thanks again for doing it again for the EAC, so. All right, we're going to move along to public participation. Is there any member of the public who would like to make a comment at this point? If you have a comment about an agenda item, you're welcome to wait until that comes up on the agenda, or you could, could speak for up to five minutes now. Just give your name and your street. Thanks.
Diana Pope, Windermere Avenue. Very brief comment. Number one, on the presentation, I understood about 20% of what was said. So I don't know why, it's just was not very or clearly spoken, so it was actually very difficult to hear. So I'm happy to hear there will be more information we can find online. The other thing is, I am a renter, and from what I understand from the 2035 plan, I'm in the majority in the township. And I was actually looking at the recycling little info sheet with the drawings and what's accepted, which is one through seven of the plastics, et cetera. And it's geared entirely to people that live in houses. It talks about how you can ask for a recycling thing the first 30 days you live in the township. Well, I can't do that as a renter. I have a dumpster, two dumpsters, one for trash, one for recycling. So all I would ask is that when the next one of these is generated, direct it to all of your citizens, not just those who live in houses. Thank you.
Thank you for the good point. And if you want to, this is actually, this recording will come out on YouTube. You might be able to hear it a little better there. I don't know, it may have been some volume issues, too. Any other member of the public who would like to speak at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any commissioner or member of the public would like to pull? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. And no public comment either? No. So I'm going to call the vote. All in favor of passing the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the business agenda. Item A is Resolution 2024-100, a land development plan preliminary slash final approval for 270 Brynmar Avenue, a four-story senior living facility. Might I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Meyer, you, oh, Mr. Falcone.
It's good to see you all. So we are back. I think we were here last month as part of a caucus with you all on this plan. Just a little bit of history, maybe for those that aren't familiar, that are maybe watching. But this plan is really back to you as a result of kind of working with the board and working with staff to come together as part of a settlement agreement as we came through the zoning process, which allowed for this project to kind of move forward. We've since gone back to the Planning Commission a few times to seek recommendation from them to come through as part of land development before we were here before caucus. Ultimately, that process was completed, and we are here, no plans, the plans have not changed at all since we were last in front of you. We haven't gotten any kind of new review or anything like that. So I have all our folks here if there's any more questions. But otherwise.
I think that there was a question on the table at the last meeting about the EMS services. We did have a meeting with Mr. Myers and our fire company, EMT providers, and I would like to hear where that stands.
Sure. So I understand there was a meeting, I think, with Mr. White as well, and some discussions around how that would be handled. I think a request was made to the applicant to make an additional contribution for EMS services. That was taken back to the property owner, and ultimately, the decision was that a pilot was a part of our settlement agreement with the township. And a part of that pilot was specifically to address this item. So we feel like that should probably carry the day on, on this specific request. And so that was communicated back to the township.
So I, I'm not going to say disingenuous, but this was not contemplated in the pilot. The pilot is, because we hadn't even raised the issue. In fact, the fire company hadn't even raised the issue. So although I understand your position, and we have agreed to the settlement, obviously, I'm voting for this project one way or the other because I think it's, it's a really solid, good project, and I'm very grateful for all of the work with the community. But I just wanted to clarify that. This was not an issue during the settlement, and we had asked for a little bit of
Right.
... contribution based on new knowledge.
Understood.
It, it was, it would, it has not been required of other developments, so it was, you know, it was an ask.
Right.
And I understand what the answer is, but I just wanted to make that clear.
So, and I appreciate that, and I should clarify my statement. So in the pilot, it talks about making provision for township services. And so it does not, we, we think this is a township service, that's how we would identify it. So I don't mean to be disingenuous, but that, that's what we believe was contemplated in the pilot. And we understand kind of your, your position on it. And, you know, I, I think to get to this point, I kind of touched on earlier, we wouldn't even be here but for kind of the collaboration from you all and from the applicant and staff. And so I think this project's kind of come a long way as, as part of this, and I do think it's going to be a good project for the township. So we appreciate everything that's been done, and appreciate your comments.
Any further commissioner comment?
Yeah, just a quick comment.
Yeah.
The, it, it has the tree removal exhibit in here, and I know you guys are putting trees and stuff in there somewhere. It's probably in one of your other plans.
We have a landscaping plan in there, right, Chris?
Yeah.
There's a separate landscaping plan as part of the, of the package. So we aren't seeking any relief for plantings, and it'll all be planted completely in compliance with the code.
Very good.
Anything further? All right. Any public participation on this issue? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All in favor of Resolution 2024-100, say aye. Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck with your plant.
Take care.
Item B is a caucus, so no voting this evening, on a final land development plan for 411 West Wayne Avenue. It's a first-floor commercial, second-floor residential plan on an undeveloped site, as I understand it. And I assume we have the applicant here or representatives. Thank you. Actually, while you're getting ready, I'm going to go ahead and take a motion on this. Oh, it's a caucus, I don't have to. Never mind.
Okay.
Getting in my own way.
Good evening. My name is Dennis O'Neil. I'm an engineer with Herbert McCumbie Consulting Engineers. With me tonight is Ken Zoo of 411 West Wayne LLC and our landscape architect, in case there's questions regarding landscape. Just some brief history on the plan. The applicant is proposing to build a commercial office with a living accommodation above the, above the office. This is a very odd-shaped lot. It's very narrow. It is non-conforming with regard to site area and lot width. It's in the C1 commercial district. It is bounded on the west and the north by residential zoning districts. So we have buffering requirements that we are proposing to meet. The building itself is rather small, 946 square feet, sits pretty much in the center of the lot. There is a proposed driveway, which is a one-way circulation through the site, coming in on the east and going around the back of the building and coming out on the west side to West Wayne Avenue. Excuse me. We required several variances in order to, to get this plan to, to work. And we, we received variances for front yard setback. We received a variance for a rear yard setback. Because of the lot size, the rear yard setback requirement is greater than the rear yard setback that is listed in the zoning. So we got relief for that. And we had several relief variances for the parking configuration. I'd like to point out that, I'm going to flip to the landscape plan. I think it'll be a little clearer. So the plan, the plan proposes three parallel parking spaces as you come in the one-way driveway, the first one being a handicap-accessible parking space. So we encroached into the front yard, we didn't meet the 20-foot setback, and those items were, we sought relief and received that from the zoning hearing board. Zoning hearing board granted their relief in November of 2023. We received in April an extension to November of 2024. We believe we're probably going to need to seek a second extension in order to give us time to get building permits. We also received a variance from the Department of Labor and Industry Accessibility Board in order to allow a parallel handicap parking space, which is eight by 22 with a five-foot walkway. Typically, if you only have one handicap-accessible space, it needs to be van-accessible, which is 16 foot wide. But given the small use, the small office area, the accessibility board deemed that it was appropriate that we could get a waiver from that requirement to provide the five-foot walkway, which is along the eastern property line. To the east is the Vicks Pizza Shop, to the, to the east of our site. The, the plan does maintain, as you can see here, the required 15-foot buffer to the, to the west and the, and the north. There's a single-family home directly to our west, and there are some townhouses to the north of the site. There is a stormwater management basin, which meets the township requirements for peak rate and water quality infiltration under the driveway and parking lot as you come in on the east side. I would like to thank a resident, local resident, Baron Gemmer, who worked with us extensively to get a layout here that was workable to the client and accessible to get some, a nice use on a very tight site. And we're appreciative of his efforts to, to help us do that. A little bit about the building. On the first floor, there's 487 square feet of dedicated office space. The space is primarily for Mr. Zoo to use. He will live upstairs and use this space for a realty office. He has another larger office in the city, but this will be his work-from-home office space. There, there will be occasional visitor, which is why we had to provide the required parking space. There is one space in the garage for the residential. The living accommodations on the second and third floor total about 1,839 square feet. The second floor is 946, and the third floor is slightly smaller at 890, excuse me, 93 square feet. As you can imagine, this is somewhat small but tall building. These are the current elevations that we have, that we're working with. The, the mass of the building is a light-colored brick, like a sand or, or beige. There are darker accents of stone and brick and aluminum panels throughout the, throughout the building area. We do meet the building height requirement, so we're not looking for, for any relief from the, from the building height requirement. There are, there are some waivers, which we are looking for. Section 255-12, which is to allow us to go preliminary final. Section 255-49 is to request relief for a, to add a streetlight. There is a pole with a streetlight directly across the street from our lot. I believe it's Pico Pole 1131. And it's conveniently located right across from our exit driveway. We are looking for a waiver from section 25527 C1 and C2. Those two sections require 60-foot wide right-of-way and, I believe, a 36-foot cartway. Existing cartway of Wayne is 22 feet, and existing right-of-way is 33 feet. It's not likely in this area that there would be other development that would contribute that would contribute if, if there were additional right-of-way in this situation. In addition to that, the depth and size of this lot would be severely impacted by the need to give 30 feet of right-of-way from the center line on this, on this side. And we are requesting a waiver from the section of the ordinance that requires the dedication of additional right-of-way because we're asking for the waiver not to, not to provide the 36 feet. From the landscaping point of view, there are trees on the site now, which are being removed, for the most part, to allow the development. There are approximately 30 plus or minus proposed trees being added to the site in the buffer. The idea here is to create a substantial visual buffer to the residential areas. To us, there's some shrubberies and other buffer, lower buffer plantings in the, in the front to soften the view of the, of the house. And we're proposing some trees along the eastern side to separate us from, from Vic's Pizza. And we've been to the planning commission. We've received a recommendation from the planning commission. And of course, our zoning hearing board processed. The, the architecture's been to the design review board. And I think they're working on a couple of minor issues. But for the most part, they approved of the architecture that, that is being, being proposed. And I can answer any questions you may have about the plan or the landscaping. We have our landscape architect here tonight as well.
Thank you very much for that great overview. That was really helpful. First, I'm just going to ask, is there any staff comment on this? Mr. Norrisini or Mr. Kachansky or?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
We have the review letters. We have no comment. They've been through many meetings.
Yeah. I can tell by looking at the dates. Okay. Any commissioner comments or questions? Seeing none?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Abel.
Can you go through the waiver with the streetlight?
Sure.
You don't, you want to use the streetlight across the street?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that answers that question. The, yeah, I know where that is. The, the trees being planted in the back, which would back up to Liberty Lane? Are those tree, do those trees have height?
I'll let Jim help you with that.
Yes, so we do have a combination of both canopy trees and evergreen.
Because those houses on Liberty Lane, you know, the last set of houses are, what are they like? How close do you think they are to that fence line?
Oh, jeez, I couldn't even begin to tell.
And those, those, those townhomes, you know, they're, they're
Yeah, they're tall.
They're on a hill. And if this, this house is three stories, you know, we don't want a house looking at a house. You'd want something separating the two.
Absolutely, yep. So we do have some canopy trees spect in the back here. They're red maples that are going to grow to, you know, 60, 70 feet of mature height.
Okay. And you don't think at any one time, there's going to be more than three vehicles on, on property? Four? Okay. Okay. And then the house, the house to the, if you're looking at, on West Wayne, the house to the left, do they have sidewalks? I can't remember if sidewalks go up that far.
Haven't, haven't looked that closely, no. I don't think they do. I know their driveway is very close to our property. There's a, there's an outbuilding, a garage that's close to the property. And then their house is set a little further away.
Okay.
And the Vic and Dean's property paving and everything is right up to the street.
Well, they would have the, so Vic and Dean's would have the parking lot, the parking spots Yeah. Bring up to West Wayne. But they do have that strip of concrete along the front side of the building, which, which is used as a walkway. You know, I will take a look at that on the way home tonight. You know, my thought is if there's sidewalks on the house to the left, you'd want to continue those sidewalks up through that area if we're developing it to be able to get the kids up West Wayne safely.
Yeah.
Because, because what we've done, to the township's credit, is we've, so after Vic and Dean's, you have, you have the vet. And at that intersection with Highland Avenue, you know, we've created sidewalks and crosswalks there. So the idea is we're trying to create a walkable neighborhood because, because more kids and more families are using the sidewalks to get to the Radnor Trail.
We are proposing, there is sidewalk currently in front of this lot. And we are proposing walks. There's a concrete walk proposed
Oh, there will be sidewalks there.
Yeah, so.
Perfect.
There are already sidewalks.
Yeah, and we're going to fix anything that, there's a note on the plan that says that any substandard sidewalk and curb to be, to be repaired.
Awesome.
Yeah, you could see them on the last picture.
Okay.
Is that it? Okay. Any other commissioner?
Yeah, sorry, another comment. And I know, say, that other plan showed the existing trees in the back. It seems like if you, if you look at a satellite view, there's more trees than that. Like it's showing that, I think, the 20-inch, like that's off the property in the back and the other one. But if you look at satellite, it seems like there's trees all over that lot. And while you're building this, it would be nice if you could just keep some of the trees. Otherwise, if you clearcut it, they're just going to see it from all sides. And it's going to take a while for the new maples to grow. It seems like you could save some more trees.
I think the question is how many of those trees are, are healthy. I mean, it's, it's a lot that has not been taken care of. And it's a mess at the moment.
We'll certainly look at the, the condition of the trees. The problem is when the canopies are so extensive there. And once you start working underneath the canopy, then you start having root damage. But we'll look at the trees and see if there are some that are, that can be tucked, tucked in or left, left there. We would love not to have to put in, you know, 30 or 35 trees. So if we can save a couple, that will certainly help us.
Thanks.
Have you been to shade tree committee?
Yes.
You have, so, and they gave you their blessing? Okay, good. Any further commissioner comments or questions? Now seeing none. Any public comment here? It's a caucus, but Mr. Gemmer.
Since my name was used, yes, Baron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue. I first saw this when it was before zoning for, and originally, all the parking was over here. And you had like a 25-foot driveway with, combined with the Vic and Dean's issue, it was going to make a pedestrian vehicular nightmare. So I actually approached the applicant and the attorney, whatever. And they were gracious enough to, to talk with me. And I had some suggestions about how this might go. And given the nature of the lot, which is irregular, particularly the one little corner spot there, they reduced, over the course of this, they've reduced the size of the footprint. I really like the circular pattern that, how it works for both vehicular and pedestrian traffic along there that, that has the sidewalk. So they, as I said, they've gone through a lot of meetings. It's, it's, it's hard to think of a, a different scenario that would work as well on this lot. I'm not necessarily speaking to the trees and the, and the buffering like that. But in terms of the footprint and the, the flow and the parking, Dennis did a great job in getting those parallel spots there and then the waiver for the, for the handicap. So yes, I, I tried to make it as good as I could to help them. And I, and I really like what they came up with, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none. It's a caucus, so thank you for coming in and giving us a good concise picture of, of what's going on. And we'll see you again.
Thank you.
All right. Item C is also a caucus on the 60 West or AT&amp;T Minor Subdivision Plan Primary Final Approval. This is just the subdivision of the lot to create Parcels A and B bordered by Lancaster Avenue, Bellevue Avenue, and West Avenue. This is not a land development. All right. Mr. Falco?
Hi, good, good to see everyone.
So Rob's just going to pull up the plan so we have a visual. So I think you all are pretty familiar with this overall development plan. The applicant is here and moving through the land development process with respect to an actual redevelopment of Parcel B. Part of what has to happen at this juncture in order for them to complete the purchase of the property from AT&amp;T is the property be divided so they can move through that process of actually acquiring the fee simple interest. And so all we are here for tonight is to confirm that separation of the property, which we've been talking about kind of through this whole process. The division, as you can see on, on the screen there, is to create Parcel A and Parcel B. Parcel B is the development parcel that's currently before the township for land development. And then Parcel A is the existing AT&amp;T building and the back parking lot, which is where the new lease with the township will be for township parking. There are really kind of no other strings attached to this part of the process. And we are seeking a waiver tonight for the 500, features within 500 feet of the site. That was noted in the review letter from the township's consultant. And I believe that's a pretty customary waiver that applicants seek. We would be seeking that as part of this preliminary final subdivision.
Could you explain that last part to me again? I just, I just didn't hear it well, I think.
Yep. One of the requirements in your ordinance is that the applicant show existing features within 500 feet of the site. And we are asking to have that
Fine. I misheard you.
Yeah, that be waived. There's no improvements being proposed as part of this subdivision. That's all coming through in the land development phase. And no off-site as well.
And this is, got nothing to do with the parking lot on West?
That's correct. So the parking lot itself is also being kind of discussed and vetted as part of the land development plan. So there's an actual plan sheet in that set that shows the new parking lot and how that it's, it's going to be handled.
But it's not part of tonight's issue.
That's correct. Yep. All we're doing is drawing a line on the paper.
And just for clarification for people
Sure.
Watching, Parcel B is the parcel that is to be developed with, you know, the, the building
That's correct.
That we've had long discussions about. Parcel A remains that what you're seeing here on the screen. Parcel A is the AT&amp;T building.
And the back parking lot.
And the back parking lot.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Any commissioner questions, comments? I think we're pretty familiar with this by now. Any staff comments, anything to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any public participation on this caucus? Seeing none. It's good to see you. We'll see you again soon.
We'll be back.
All right. Item D is Resolution 2024-106, Authorization of the Payment for the Quantity Adjustment for Increases in the Concrete and Unforeseen Non-Contract Abutment Work and Decreases in the Excavation Repointing and Glue-Laminated Materials to Roadcon Incorporated for the Hunt Road Bridge Replacement in the Net Total Amount of $12,775.86 to be funded from the Stormwater Fund. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Norrisini?
Thank you, Madam President. So this project is complete. The bridge is open. It was completed on time. We were within budget, including this change order. So there was a little table that came with this. It showed some quantities that were reduced. And we had some unforeseen conditions and quantity adjustments that came out to the, a net of a $12,000 increase. They've been reviewed by us and our consultants, found to be all proper. And we are respectfully requesting approval of that from this board.
Thank you very much. Any commissioner questions or comments? Seeing none. Any public participation on this issue? Again, seeing none. I am going to call a vote on Resolution 2024-106. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right. We'll move on quickly to reports of board liaisons. Anyone have anything to report? Seeing none. Any new business? Any old business? Commissioner Riley?
Old, but not that old. Maybe like, the last time we were here, and this, last time we were here, the company, we approved them to design for the roof and for solar panels to go on. This building and also Public Works building. And Public Works, I think they said it would cover 100%. The solar would cover 100% of its electrical needs. This building would cover 13% in putting solar panels up on the roof. But then the, the southern side of this building's here. And there's trees behind us, so they couldn't put it on like this section of the roof. But I wanted to know, while they're doing it, could they check to see if they could put panels on the southern side of the building that wouldn't get shade from the trees and such?
Commissioner, do you mean the vertical side of the building?
The vertical side, thank you.
Sure, I, I can ask them if, if that works.
Okay. Because like, even when we come in there, there already is some temporary solar panel that's out there. Like when you come through the circle.
That's to power the camera for the voting, for the mail-in voting.
Like, that side of the building gets a lot of sun, you know, up high.
I will ask them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further old business? No. Any final public participation? Seeing none. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.